Coming last week, amazing. I mean, you know, I got nothing but time and... But I'm just saying, like, you know, I want to come to more, you know what I'm saying? I went to the school board meeting last week. Y'all have to do it way better than they do.
That clock is a little bit fast.
Hey, Jim.
The chair will call the May 7th, 2024, meeting of the city council to order. If you will all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll? Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory. Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Mayor Protem Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Henauer.
Here.
Mayor Busher.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair will entertain a motion to allow Mayor Busher to participate in the meeting via remote means.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And for the record, the mayor is in Washington, D.C., representing the city along with members of the Chamber of Commerce, and they're out there lobbying and hopefully going to bring back plenty of projects and funds for the betterment of the city. So welcome, welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Donlin. I appreciate it.
The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the April 16th, 2024, city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of the remaining or the remaining ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Excuse me, the voting is now open. All those in favor vote aye. All those opposed, nay. And the ayes have it. On that matter, the ayes are nine, the nays are none. Agenda items number 2024-089 and 2024-120 remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is 2024-132, an ordinance approving the appointment of Tracy L. Deal to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2024-132 on final passage.
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Actually, that was from the table.
We'll have, we'll go back to that.
Okay.
Okay, since we're already on this, in discussion on this ordinance. Okay. Here, seeing none, is she here? Okay, I guess not. All those in favor signify by, all those in favor vote aye. All those opposed, nay. The voting is now open. And for the record, welcome Alderwoman Purchase. On that matter, there are 10 ayes, no nays, and the motion passes. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nottriano.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering if it would be in order to ask for an update on the tabled ordinance, 2024, 120?
Yes, my office received a revised contract that I'm, that I'm reviewing and will be making sure that it complies with the discussion that we had. And hopefully, we'll be able to remove that soon and have further discussion on it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Alderwoman?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counselor. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number 2024-133, an ordinance appointing Joshua Banks to the Deferred Compensation Committee. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2024-133 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the alderpeople?
Is he here?
Okay, he is here. Raise your hand. Mr. Banks, if you want to come to the podium. I know most of us know you and just introduce yourself. We'd appreciate it. Thanks for coming and your interest.
Hello, my name is Josh Banks. I'm a resident of 8228 Hunt Road in Springfield, Ward 1. I'd like to start by saying thank you to Mayor Busher and to the ladies and gentlemen of the city council for your consideration for the appointment of the Deferred Compensation Committee. I've been a member of the Springfield Fire Department since 2013 and have represented the members of Local 37 in several capacities in my time since then. I look forward to bringing my hard work, determination, dedication, and due diligence to the work of this committee and excited to, you know, continue to grow in the representation of not only firefighters, but citizens of Springfield, so.
Mr. Banks, thanks for coming this evening. Thanks for your willingness to serve anybody. Any questions of him while he's up here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the voting is now open. All those in favor signify by saying yes. All those opposed, nay. On that matter, the ayes have it. 10 voting aye, no voting nay. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number 2024-135, an ordinance amending ordinance 1, ordinance 109-03-21, removing the requirement of 5% escrow to the city of Springfield for owner-occupied residences for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2024-135 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Gregory signed up.
Yes, can, can somebody from Economic Development advise me how this would work with this escrow with the remaining match?
Director Hazel, welcome.
Thank you. Alderman, it would be just exactly the same way as the, the funds for the businesses are. When we, when we went to distribute funds for the home funds, we realized there was a, not only that they were to do a 5% match, but it was also the originating ordinance said that they had to have 5% escrow. To make it even between the businesses and the homeowners, I decided we should take the escrow agreement out. So now they will only just have to provide that 5% towards the, the full funding that they have.
Okay. So, so in, in the description of the, of the ordinance, you know, we, we had mentioned something about people having trouble meeting this 20 and 30%. So this 5%, if they put this batch up, will they still, I mean, do we anticipate still having issues?
No, I, I don't think so. We, we didn't have issues, but I was, we were just trying to prove that by going that 10%. Well, we'd be holding on. The city would be holding on to 5%, which in my mind was not necessarily equitable and fair. So we want to use that 5% to put money down for any of these projects. And then we have called and talked to people who are, are providing services for them, you know, to assure them this is something that we're doing, that we're providing those funds. So I don't, I don't see this as a problem.
Okay. So my, my only confusion, and this is to my council members who were, who were prepared to support me on the amendment, right, to take away the match. My only confusion came for this was my original question was about the businesses, about the business grants and when they would come out. And we could talk about that at another time. So when this came forward, when we wrote the original ordinance, I, you know, how that got in there that we, we do a 5% escrow and 5% match, I, I don't know. That, that never, escrow wasn't in, in, in my wheelhouse at that time. So, you know, with that, say, you know, for, for my misunderstanding and, and it, it always comes with communication. And I know you guys say, well, we'll call you and call, you know, call, but nobody calls me, you know? So, you know, this, this information and stuff, you know, I need to make educated decisions. I told Mr. Lesko that, that I just need information so I can make an educated decision.
Well, I think you and I talked one time after city council. I told you I was concerned about this and that I would be bringing it forward to do that.
Absolutely. And I spoke to the mayor and she said she was had this coming and I, I just was, I just don't know how that, how that got that way. We're within 5 and 5.
Yeah, it was in the originating ordinance. And, you know, we can, we can talk about that. I'm happy for you to come in and I can show you. It's in the origin, or I can actually send it to you if you'd like me to. It's in the originating ordinance.
I, I did see the orders. I just didn't see, it, it read a little different to me. I interpreted it a little differently. I interpreted that the, the residence 5% was what we were holding in escrow and, and sort of releasing that once they completed the project. So thank you for that understanding and I'm ready to vote.
Anything further, Alderman Gregory?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hazel. Anybody else have further purposes of discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Okay, on, on that motion, 10 voting aye, no vote, none voting nay, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number 2024-13, 140, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing payment to Halls Harley-Davidson in the amount not to exceed $70,0647.90 for the purchase of two Harley-Davidson FLHTP motorcycles outfitted with a police package to be utilized in the Springfield Police Department motor unit for the Springfield Police Department. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2024-140 on final passage.
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote yes. All those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. Trying to vote here. Here we go. On that motion, there are 10 ayes, none voting nay. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number 2024-181, a resolution requesting temporary, temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route South 6th Street, 6th Street from St. Joseph's to Adelaide Stevenson Drive for the Church of the Little Flower Men's Club Street and Festival on May 24th, 2024, for the Office of Public Works. This is for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2024-181 on final passage.
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. The voting is now open. All those in favor signify by saying yes. All those opposed, no.
I'm sorry.
It's not taking my vote.
Me neither.
There it goes.
Oh, there we go. Okay, on that motion, there are 10, Mayor Busher, you vote on this one.
I vote yes.
All right, on that motion, on, on that motion, there are 11 voting aye, none voting nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is 2024-182, an ordinance authorizing payment to Enchanted Castle Studios LLC for Route 66 grant number 24-336004 in an amount not to exceed $69,000 for the Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2024-182 on final passage.
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Mayor Busher, do you have anything? I apologize for not asking you before.
No, no discussion here.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, the voting is now open. All those in favor vote aye. All those opposed vote nay. Mayor Busher, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
On that motion, there are 11 ayes, none voting nay. The motion passes. Is there un, any unfinished business to bring before this city council meeting? Any unfinished business? Is there any new business to bring before this city council meeting? Alderman Gregory.
Yes, I was trying to press it on old business, but I just wanted to follow up on the CAP 1908. Our director is here, so I want to just have a short conversation with her and, and go from there.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
So, so Val, I just want to start out by saying, you know, I, I sent an email to rest of our council in response to you, right? And, and, you know, I was very, very harsh with it and, but I want you to let you know, in no way were I calling you a racist. I was just pointing out how I felt that, that, that wording makes me feel, you know? I think the people in our community are very, very smart, especially on this project. They have degrees and all types of things. They're, they're very, very, very smart. And I do think that some things on our side could have been done better. But the thing about me that, that, you know, because some of our council members, I know they're a little upset at, at that letter, but the thing about me is I'm, I'm always a man. And if I was wrong for making you feel that I was what I was calling, then I'm sorry for that. But I want you to hear me too. I want you to understand how that makes me feel and how hours and hours of hours, and this ain't even to you, but to our council, a conversation about small projects on, in, in our end of the town makes us feel. And so I apologize for that portion of it, but I do really, really, really feel that there is some areas that we can get better at in our Economic Development Department when it comes, comes to funds that are directed to underserved and underprivileged communities. And, and, and I took my word out of that wording there because there is other areas of our community that CBDG funds and all of these things can benefit greatly, including, you know, other funds. So, so I definitely, definitely, definitely wanted to say that to you. We were just at the check cutting and, and maybe everybody doesn't know this, but both of us had our arms around each other, right? So, you know, when, when, when all of that happened, it sort of took me back a little bit, like, well, why has nobody said nothing to me? So we can get on the phones and make our calls and gain understanding of what's going on and, and try to work a solution, you know, for that particular project. Because, because I can tell you, you know, we got many good things going on in our city that are going to mean the world to parts of town. And, and this particular project can, can definitely, definitely help us start a trajectory of real visible change in our communities. And, you know, like I said before, you know, I, I'm always told, oh, we got a call and, you know, why didn't you call me on this vote and things of that nature? And, you know, I try to do that and, and, you know, but I don't get that back. You know, I don't get that back. You know, there's, there's things that come up here and nobody calls me, you know, and they just do their thing. So a lot of times it's, it's, you know, we're trying to be legislators and our job is, is to look at the things that we have in place and change it if it's difficult and put it to a vote. So, so anytime that I do that, I'm never trying to trump the mayor or trump you or anything like that. But it's my job, you know, as a representative of this community, is to try to articulate our needs and our, our wants and our wishes for this particular community. And all the time, you know, I, I don't feel like everyone understands a lot of the times. And I don't, I, I get that, you know? We all come from different walks of life. But it still is my job to try to articulate those things to not only this council, but, but to the different offices of the city. So I appreciate you. I don't want to go back, but can you, can you educate us on going forth on, on CAP 1908 and what we're going to do with it?
I'm going to defer to Corporation Council.
All right, thank you.
Counselor, please.
Sure, so we have, CAP 1908 has pushed back their closing. We have agreed within HUD guidelines, we can provide a 3% escrow payment towards the total purchase price pending the environmental review, which is what we intend to do. So those draft contracts have been sent to the attorneys for CAP 1908. And as soon as we have a, as soon as we have a signed contract, then we will provide that money in escrow. And we have agreed that we will expedite, we will, on the city side, go as fast as we can to complete the environmental review. Now HUD and HUD still has 30 days to, to review our environmental findings, but we're going to do everything on the city side to work towards that closing. And then once the closing occurs, that escrow is applied to, to the purchase price. So we're waiting to hear back from their attorney to whether, regarding the language in these conditional contracts, but that, that's how we intend to move forward.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, counselor. Anything further, Alderman?
No.
Alderman Carlson.
A couple of things. I, to piggyback on what Sean said, and I, I thought the email was, the words were rather interesting, but I want to say, say thanks to, to Val. I mean, this is the public's money. I mean, the federal government through HUD, the 1.6, they are entrusting us to spend that money correctly, wisely. If, if, if she goes down the path and nothing is said, to me, we jeopardize future projects if we don't do what's necessary. And so in that respect, I want to thank her for that. And then really what I was, the second thing is unfortunately, as we know, we got here, the post office decided to move to St. Louis. And I think it's unfortunate. And I, I'm proud of the fact that we all stood up and the mayor and, and went out there a month ago. And it's interesting, the article, they don't give us a timeframe. You know, it's interesting that they claim they took public input. I mean, clearly not. I mean, it's just unfortunate now that, you know, I'm still old school. My kids write thank you notes to friends and relatives and grandparents. Now it's got to go to St. Louis and come back up north someplace. So, you know, I think it's, it's just unfortunate and there's no way they listen to public input if they would have seen the 300 or 400 people there that night. So, thank you, Chair.
Alderman Carlson, thanks for bringing up the latter especially. I tell you, it's, it was very frustrating to see and, and I feel like we're all shut out and, and I thought it was a, a sight for us all to be up there and, and standing as one and, and we should do that more often on things that are of most importance.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Yeah, so I, this is, I don't know if anybody else has questions for Val, but this is not for you.
Oh, okay. You want me to come back up again?
It's new, new business.
Right, right, yes, yes. Thank you.
Alderwoman, sorry.
Okay, so I have a couple of topics. First one, I wanted to let my colleagues know that a couple of Mondays ago, when I had off work, I took and went on a ride along with my zone manager and it was illuminating. They have got their hands full and I think they're going to be a great help, great help to us in terms of trying to wrangle in some of these real chronic problems like fly dumping and folks who don't have garbage service and things of that nature. And so to the fly dumping end, one of the big issues that he pointed out to me as we toured some of the fly dumping hotspots and, and just trash hotspots in the city, a couple of these are in people's backyards. And so it appears that we have some off-books entrepreneurs in the scrapping industry who are taking things that we leave in our alleys or that we dump places and then bringing them back and trying to extract whatever scrap they can so they can go then sell it. And so this is a major issue for us. And my constituent, one of my constituents called me and came up with a great idea, which I'd like all of your input on and especially Corporation Council's input on. But the idea of approaching this from the, the scrap buyer's perspective is if there's anything we can do, because I, the zone manager related a little anecdote to me and said, somebody brought in some scrap that they got from a house that was vacant and boarded up and came away with $6 from the person buying the scrap. And I feel like in that instance, we should be able to prevent them from buying or put some sort of regulation that would make them do their due diligence and, and make sure that they're not buying from someone who is one of these scrapping entrepreneurs.
I'd be happy to talk with you after, after the council meeting about this.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, well, good. Good to know that it's not completely off the table. And another thing that I wanted to talk about that my constituents had reached out to me about and that I personally received was a letter over the weekend about lead lines in, going to my house, or I believe my letter was suspected lead lines. And so I just wanted to ask someone from either the utility or the water department if they could address some questions about those letters.
Yeah, I, I thought that the utility did a good job of sending us the information and that would absolutely be worth hearing and, and thanks for bringing that up. One of my colleagues I work with, one of our attorneys, he, he received one of those letters as well and was curious. So you guys, gentlemen, could keep it brief, but informative, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I would say first off, it wasn't really something that we were excited to, to do necessarily in the, in the format that we required to do it, so.
Yeah, so on April 15th, the state required us to submit what we call a complete lead service line or service line inventory. And so that inventory has to be updated each year up to 2027, and then they'll call it our final service line inventory. And so subsequent to submitting that complete service line inventory, there's a federal statute that requires a letter go out to all known or suspected service, lead service lines that are on that list within 30 days. And the state brought to all the utilities attention that they were going to adopt that standard and, and require that notification. So within a couple of weeks, we had to send out 10,800 letters. And the type of letter you got was dependent upon the type of service line material you had. There was three different templates.
Anything further, Alderwoman?
Oh, yeah, sure. So I would just like to, so the constituent who reached out to me wanted to know what the plan was. She lives in Ward 6, near Washington Park, and I happen to live in the same area, but this isn't about me. But just basically getting an idea to sort of put people's fear at ease, like if they go and buy a test and test their water and it's positive for lead, do you have any advice? What should they do? And then when could folks in that part of town expect relief?
Right, so if, if someone does do a test, they need to send it to a state-certified laboratory for it to be really valid results, meaningful results. So there's a number of labs that we could recommend. There's three or four that we could give anybody that wants to do a test of their finished drinking water. The plan moving forward, so obviously with 10,800 known or suspected lead service lines, we've got a tall task in order. It's a 20-year project. So again, by 2027, we hope to have our program ramped up to 500 replacements per year. Currently, we extended, or we were able to extend an IEPA grant, so we continue work under that grant. We've done 92 service lines so far in 2024. Keep in mind, January, February, not real conducive to construction, so not getting a lot done in those first two years. And we've done 404 potholes to try to verify materials so far this, this calendar year. So moving forward, we've applied for another grant in wards 2 and 3. It'd be census tract 16 and 23. So that grant would allow us to replace another 200 lead service lines per year. So that's our immediate plans moving forward.
So the 92, is that it for this year or where?
No, we hope to hit somewhere between 250 and 300 replacements.
And do you have an idea of where those will be? Are they sort of like case by case?
So yes and no. So under this current loan with principal forgiveness, we're doing those replacements in various areas throughout the city. Under the new program, under the new principal forgiveness loan, we have to specify the census tract we're going to work in. So those replacements would be specifically in census tract 16 and 8, or 16 and 23. We've also got ordinance we put through with the ARPA funds. So when there's leaks on the customer side or our side and we have to go out there on an emergency basis, we will be in various areas throughout the city utilizing those funds as well.
So do you feel like the emergencies are probably what's going to happen this year So do you feel like the emergencies are probably what's going to happen this year then?
So we have about 75 emergency repairs a year.
Okay.
So, um, so that's basically a two-year effort, 150 total service lines under the emergency program.
Okay, great. Yeah, and, um, I, I just wanted to say, um, this constituent who reached out to me was surprised. They did not know, and like their neighbors had told them, oh, no, we don't have lead lines over here. And so I just wanted to, um, point this out for everyone who may be watching and, um, give people an opportunity to check out, uh, the very helpful webpage that you have. What is it called?
Well, we have a lead awareness section of the CWLP website, right? And so we are actively sending out, uh, personnel to homes, setting up what we call timers to go inside people's basements and check out the materials and update and kind of fortify our, our lead service line inventory. So we can certainly do that if someone has that concern.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, and there's one other thing that, uh, we're going to try in June. I don't really know what to tell you about what the prospects of how well it's going to work, but it's kind of an innovative approach. We're teaming up with Mueller. And, uh, they're going to try some effort to predict service line material based on sound wave propagation to the material. So we're going to try that in early June. It'd be just a little pilot project of about 50 different locations. So hopefully that'll increase the speed at which we can shore up that inventory as well.
Definitely. All right.
Anything further, Alderwoman?
No, that sounds good. Thank you.
Can I follow up?
Gentlemen, thank you. Uh, is it related to this topic?
Yes.
Okay, I'll allow it. Is that okay?
Yeah, because mine's is on this topic too, but you can go first.
Um, so.
Thank you.
We've, we've talked about the lead line replacements up to the house. Don't most of these houses that have lead lines on the outside have lead lines on the inside?
So what we see is, uh, if we have what we call lead materials, it's typically lead from the water main to the property line, and then it's galvanized from that point, the property line into the house.
Okay.
So under the rule, um, if galvanized was ever downstream of lead, it's considered lead. So it's one and the same. It still needs to come out of the ground.
Makes sense. I mean, there is possibility that, uh, the internal like faucets and those kinds of things could be led inside the house, but that's not really under our purview.
I get that, but my, my concern is that the people that are going to have the opportunity to replace their lead lines probably aren't going to have money to replace it on the inside either. So that may be another situation that people are going to need to.
So you're probably not going to find lead, true lead lines inside a house. What you have to look for there, as Doug alluded to, is, um, lead containing fixtures and/or copper with lead solder and galvanized, of course, that, that was once downstream of lead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Alden Williamson, thank you for.
No problem, Chuck's the senior, so, yeah. Really? So what I wanted to, uh, ask you is following up kind of what he's talking about. So are we doing some kind of marketing or a better job at, um, making the public aware that there's grants or some kind of assistance for, for the homeowner's side? Not so much for the city side when it comes to these lines?
So what we've done so far, um, is we've, uh, I mean, we've targeted these locations based on where we know there's lead in the system. So has there been like a, a public, I guess, uh, hearing or, or public, uh, what do I want to call it? Advertisement to say there's some grant money available? Not so much. But we do plan on doing that if we do get this, um, loan with principal forgiveness specific to these two wards, 2 and 3.
Yes, I mean, I was happy to see the new grant did address the census tracts. You know, my, my personal opinion, everything should be based on need. And I, I, I do know that the older part of Springfield and the oldest lines are east, you know? So I always hear the word, but we do specific locations and that doesn't identify any kind of location. Not that I'm against anything citywide, but we need to have some kind of priority list and how it goes. And as the Alderman, uh, Norteriano asked, you know, location wise, where is this actually at? And then you explained that in my ward, if I ask you how many lead lines I have in Ward 3, could you tell me?
I could get that number for you, yes.
Okay, I, I think all of us should know how many lead lines we have in our wards, because I think this is going to become bigger and more important to people than what we realize. And I think we also just need to advertise or figure out a way, especially if we're awarded some kind of grant or money that would allow us to assist them with help. They see the bits and pieces in the news and in the newspaper, they start panicking. Oh, I'm not going to have the money to do that. What's the sense in bringing it up to my house and then I, I can't do my part? So I just think we got to really get a little more organized on, on the approach to the citizens and make them understand.
Well, when we reach out to, uh, the customers that are affected in, in those census tracts that we're going to do that work on, they're going to be told that basically these grants are going to pay for their service connection.
Okay, yeah, I thought I read that somewhere.
Yeah, they're going to be told that. So that way it, it really encourages them to, to allow us to go ahead and do the work. And, and sometimes maybe not, but in most cases they do.
Okay, I appreciate you guys.
And we've been able to do that to date with these loans with principal forgiveness. For all the customers, we've replaced lead service lines, uh, for. So essentially we've absorbed the cost of the city side or the public side through our CWLP O and M budget. And then we've utilized the grant money to finance the, the, uh, private side. That money is not infinite though. I mean, there's like three more years of it out there on the federal bill money. But, uh, we're hoping that we get a couple of years' worth of it here. I think we'll have a decision maybe in July.
I appreciate you.
But keep pushing and, you know, for more additional federal funding.
Absolutely.
Is going to be a key, I think, in the future.
Alderman Williams, anything further?
Yes, I need to, if OPED could come up again, please. I tried to catch it before, but I didn't know if it was new or old or what.
I appreciate it.
Um, so, uh, Director, um, I missed, um, the annual CDBG, you know? And, and maybe I missed some emails. So when we advertised those things or advertised this, was there other emails out previously that I may have missed? Because the one I got was at 8:30 the morning of, uh, 12 o'clock.
You're right, and that, that was all on me, and I take full responsibility for it.
Okay, so we, so I didn't.
But I also sent a recording of it.
I appreciate it.
So you've got the recording of everything that was.
Which takes me to my second piece. So I did listen to the recording and then I did read through the whole report that's, I guess it's stamped draft maybe.
Yes.
So what I wanted to ask you, there was good news in it for, for, for my ward. So I ain't complaining, but what I am saying is I heard of one of the entities I'm interested in verbally in the recording, but I didn't see it in the writing. Uh, is there any reason why?
What, what is it specifically?
And when, when you listen to the recording, um, she mentions the entity that's maybe awarded, you know, for their staffing, team leader, these different things. But it wasn't in writing like, like the rest of the report. And, and I'm speaking the boxing club, just the ring of champions to be specific.
Hi, I'm Julie Cave. I'm operations coordinator over community development for OPED.
Thank you.
They just applied recently, so it was after the draft was put together.
Okay.
So we just, I, we just put them in. So I added them to, um, when I did the public hearing, but it wasn't in that draft.
And, and that kind of, I appreciate that. That answered the question.
I've added it in now, but the draft that we published in the, that's been out, yes.
Because we just met with them last week.
I just noticed the difference and then that made me nervous again after I was happy. I said, oh, wait a minute, because you know our relationship can, you know, I also, let me make sure we're solid. And then finally, I, I have been asking for this list of step by step how to do these things with any funds. TIF, uh, CDBG, you name it, and I haven't got anything yet.
No, we're.
But I have gotten your cards and says, start here. So, and which I know I got them at the right people at the right time. Don't do nothing, don't buy nothing, you may not get, just start here. But I still would like that step by step piece.
Yeah, we're working with the mayor and, and she knows we're going to be presenting that to you very soon.
Okay, so we just don't have a timeline of when I might get that, because we're operating.
Working specifically on the TIF right this very moment, and then we'll go to the HUD funds.
Okay, okay. And then of course marijuana is in the back of my mind too, so.
Cannabis.
Or care, why? Marijuana's not a bad word.
No, that's good.
Well, you say cannabis, Alderman, and I'm going to say marijuana, and you're going to grow up.
Tomato?
Okay, we're all right.
Anything further, Alderman Williams?
That's it. Thank you very much. Oh, no, 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 I'm not finished. One more, one more. I'm so sorry.
Please.
Uh, Mr. Lesko, thank you. I appreciate you, yeah.
Okay.
So Mr. Lesko, um, you know, we, we have had some rough times, uh, with OPED and with, um, with your office, with the contracting and making people obligated to what the city's supposed to do when it comes to residency, you know, and their piece there, uh, minority numbers and their piece females and their piece and tracking that. So again, with you as well, uh, I'm trying to get led to where I can read that for myself. Not only that, but who's enforcing, who's the gatekeeper? And, and, and I don't like it when somebody says to me, oh, well, they have to report somewhere in the state, so they already do that. No, if we're given local money, then we want local control, at least on be able to check these things that this many of them lived in Springfield, this many of them were females, this many of them were minorities. So I, I just can, I guess, talk to you off record, but again, some form of process. Because so that we don't have the big little disagreements we've been having publicly in previous meetings, what we're going to do in the future is try to be ahead of the game. That's why I was trying to make that CDBG meeting. I, I do have a good outlook now of the next year and what's going on and how it's happening. I still want to clear my mind on these areas with contracting in the city.
Sure.
If you could.
Yeah.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Now I'm finished, Mr. Chuck.
Thank you, Alderman.
I'm there.
Alderwoman Purchase.
I will be not as long as Alderman Williams. First, I would like to acknowledge Happy Mother's Day, Mother's Day to all the amazing, beautiful mothers, including mine, for this Sunday. And then secondly, I would want to do another friendly reminder. We have the Fat Ass 5K this weekend coming up, and we have a pre-party that's open to the entire public. It is not closed off to participants. It's open up to everyone in the city of Springfield, and that is from 5 to 10:30. Um, it'll be on 7th Street. You'll see the big stage. And then on Saturday morning, for those who are registered or if you just want to come and cheer them on, we will be taking off around 10 o'clock, and that goes from 10 to 3. And there's another after-party after they're done eating, drinking, and getting their steps in. So we hope to see everyone, and I'll be there cheering them on. And then lastly, well, actually two more. I did want to give a shout out to one of our bar owners from downtown. They were a good Samaritan. We had an officer who was injured this past weekend. I saw a full video of it. And so they, uh, helped to keep him stable until the ambulance came. It was Terrence Lawson. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to one of our bar businesses who was doing a good deed this weekend. And I was able to witness the whole entire thing of somebody recording it. And I hope our officer is okay, because it didn't look good from that moment. And then my last thing is a follow-up on our zone managers. My zone manager, Mr. Brady, he's doing a phenomenal job, and I want to help him because he's, he's taking on a lot right now. And I'm not for sure, do we have any status update for City Works? I know a lot of us up here have talked about how when ticket orders get put in, how do we get a status update of where they are with all of the reports that's being turned in? So Director Fuchs, do you want to provide us where we're at? And again, I only bring this up because I'm sure we're going to continue to have each of our wards, somebody's turning in something. And sometimes it's hard to follow up and say, for me, at the end of my emails, I say, we would greatly appreciate a status update when available for our constituents not to keep following up saying, hey, when is my ticket order next?
Director Fuchs, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, City Works is our bible. That's what, uh, the Public Works Department depends on. We are in the process of several upgrades, and the capability that you are speaking of is something that we hope to achieve, but we don't have it just yet. Now, uh, I'm a pen and paper sort of guy, so if you want to get into bits and bites and all those sort of things, I could, uh, make sure the, the engineers, uh, update you on that. But, uh, it's approaching, uh, and it is our goal to be able to, uh, to have that capability.
Thank you. And that's where we'll just be able to see what's in our ward that's been turned in and see where it's at, like which number it's coming up on.
That's what I'm told we will be able to do.
Ooh, thank you, Jesus. And, um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath.
Uh, so I want to follow up on Alderman Williams's request to OPED about, uh, the compliance of minority participation. The mayor has put together a committee, uh, of which I am the chairman, and it's made up of OPED, legal, Public Works, CWLP, and who else? And who? Oh, uh, Mike Lesko, Mike Lesko, and then, uh, and then Chief of Staff Disco. Uh, our job is to do contract compliance. We oversee and go through, uh, every contract to make sure that they're following the rules, they're keeping up with their minority, uh, uh, participation numbers. And, uh, we go through it every, every week. We meet every week. So those, those kind of things come in front of us. The mayor, we report back to the mayor and tell them what we found. If we find descriptive, if we find any kind of description, discrepancy, blah, blah.
Discrepancy.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we, we get with the, who, the contractors or the developers and get it straightened out so they get in, come within compliance. So we do have those numbers. We've put them together. And Mike, I think we have a, a spreadsheet for most of it now, so. So it's, believe me, we're watching it. The mayor's adamant about making sure that we're in compliance on all those levels. And we are going to make sure that, uh, that the contractors, anybody that does business for the city is, uh, is following the rules. So I hope that helps.
It helps. Done, Alderman Redpath?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase again.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Chuck, I'm glad to hear you said that because, again, that day that we found out there was a waiver for women minority participation, my antennas went up. I blew a gasket. You know, you're talking to somebody who used to work at the Illinois Department of Transportation, and you don't get to provide us with a waiver. We provide it to you once you show us that you have met all the guidelines and you have reached out to numerous contractors. So it was just a little mind bottling, but I'm glad to know that you are on that and to hear that, because this is the first time I'm hearing it. So anytime we have questions, we can defer over to you all and say, hey, what is this like? Because that stirred a whole conversation for about 45 minutes, and I think all of us was taken back by that.
And we, uh, we have a good committee and they're, they work very hard at it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I'll just say, uh, Alderman, um, so I'm trying to find a way where, where we as Aldermen get, get information. So if there's a spreadsheet or, or the committee, no doubt you probably are doing a good job and, and being the watchdog you should be to make sure that they're in compliance. But I, I still would, at least me for Ward 3, for projects that are in my area, I, I still would like to know, uh, you know, what's going on, uh, how did they do on this, on this contract and things like that.
Let Mike explain that. Let Mike explain.
Yeah, I, I'll get you that information.
Okay, and that, and, and I, I just think if the Aldermen know what's going on in each of our wards, on our projects, it just would be a level of comfortability to even reply to neighborhood associations and other groups out there that watch this kind of stuff.
Yeah, well, I'll be happy to get that, that information.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me know about the committee that answers. I guess it was a secret committee, because that, it answers a whole lot of.
It really wasn't secret.
It answered a whole lot of questions.
Mayor Busher put it together and assisted on compliance, so we're doing that.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. I, I remember last year when we put in the PLA on 100% of our projects, we talked about a, a minority council and, um, to make sure that we, we, we hit that, um, hit those goals. We, we didn't move forth on it, but it was a conversation that we did have last year. So I'm happy to hear a, a variation of that. I would say thank you, Mr. Lesko, for providing me the numbers. I'm still waiting on the, um, minority contractor list, um, that, that's supposed to be provided and, you know, um, you know, I, I looked at those numbers and, and I could say that I know anybody who's looked at those numbers on, um, those three firehouses was, was disappointed, right? Not only did we, out of how many ever sections, each one of them got three sections for each one of those companies. Not only did we fail at, and I'm just using the verbiage off the sheet, fail at minority percentage horribly, female percentage horribly, we didn't do too job, good, good of a job with local percentage. And that really, 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 it just, just, just puzzles me. Um, because here we have a $20 million project and local, um, workforce is, is below 50%.
Couple of things, and I don't know that those numbers will change, but, and I, it's going to sound like a couple of excuses.
No.
But one, we're in the middle of the project, so it's always, it's sometimes dangerous to judge an entire project in the middle. Secondly, the, that PLA was passed in 2022, so it's not the project labor agreement we have enforced currently that was passed last, last August. So the, uh, the, the minority labor participation and the, the project labor agreement that was passed last August were not enforced. was passed last August were not enforced at the time of the when those contracts were passed.
So can you send me my project that has accomplished the goals since we passed the PLA?
Uh, yeah, we can look at, uh, yeah, we can look at uh like the uh the Poplar Place, some of the Poplar Places.
Poplar Place passed, but same same situation, you know, they're they're they're, they did a good job, but we had a nice handful of people who was not from Springfield working. Now, I can tell you, right, me and Alderman Williams and Alderman Purchase and and other members of this council, we we talked about this for some time, but me and him had to make a choice, right? Shut up and get the work done, cause we need housing that bad in our community, we need projects done in our community that bad, or are we gonna stand on our sword about making sure that we got brothers and sisters and minorities on these jobs that that we provide money to? Um, so when 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 our, you know, um, Alderman No Toronto, you know, brought up that factor, it it really just made us really look at it again, you know, um, and 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 it really, um, I'm glad to hear about the thing, but it, you know, it it makes us, you know, really, really look at it, you know, um, we wanna see it. I I really, really think that in order for us to improve on these numbers, we have to improve on training, we have to improve on funding for training programs, uh, especially on the residential side, especially on the residential side. The commercial side's gonna be, you know, um, something that that has to be worked out, um, from the top to the bottom, but but on our residential side, with with so much funds that go out to to our community, we have a real opportunity, um, to to get some training, get some minority training going, and 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 really improve our housing stock. So, you know, I, again, great things, I like what O'Shea's doing, I think more companies need to go grab them, a minority, help them grow, that will help their numbers grow. It's a cause and effect. Um, on one part, one part of it, we got forty-six percent minority percent participation, so I know it can be done, right? But he's only one guy, and there's many, many people who would be interested in doing business with the city, with learning how they need to do business with the city, and really helping us bring those numbers up. Um, from a city's standpoint, our staff, we're doing a fabulous job, we're we're, you know, I'm looking at the numbers, this up, a percentage of two, our police is knocking it out the 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 box. They they gonna have more minorities on the police force, hear me again, than any other department in the city.
A quick follow-up.
Go ahead, I'm done, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, Alderman, Alderman, if you can, Alderman Williams has been waiting, so go ahead.
Well, well, you know, I always defer to seniors, but I'll say this, Senior Alderman, I'm sorry, Senior Alderman, okay. So the numbers he's talking about, was that sent to all the Aldermen or just to Sean?
What Sean requested.
Well, see, so this is where I'm trying to get us to, I think anything like that should go to all of us, so when we're asking these kinda questions or debating, we understand more because we all got the same information.
I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to send that information to everyone.
I just appreciate in the future, yeah, to to not just me, but to all of us, so that we'll all take a look at what's going on resident-wide, women-wise, you know, minority, all of it, you know?
Yeah, I'll be happy to send you that report.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
So as a follow-up, on the firehouses especially, it didn't fall under the rules we have now, that's what he was talking about, but we have talked to the developer, the general contractor, and he is making efforts to try to improve those numbers on those right now. So they're, we're knocking on their door. I mean, I I you guys know me, I knock hard on the door, and and they they are, I've met with the developer, talked to him, and and said, look, we gotta, this is important to our city, and we gotta get those numbers up. And and he's he's working on that. So it doesn't fall under the rules we have now, but he is on this on the on the effort, so, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, from my office's standpoint, if you know any contractors who are interested in doing business with the city, have them call my office, I will get them, I mean, it's not a difficult process to get them registered with the city of Springfield, to get them, you know, notified anytime we have bids going out, to get them, you know, signed up and things like that, so I'm happy to.
Well, we have talked about it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Please, thank you.
I'll I'll refer to my junior.
So I I I can honestly tell you, what what we have talked about is is there is many, many people who can do the work, we just gotta really get them set up business-wise
and 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 some of the things that you need, um, to conduct business in this in this environment. Um, you know, it's same as contractors, right? I could take a fistful of twentys and get every lot cut on the east side, like that. However, it's not a proper way, we gotta go through some things and stuff like that, so I've been pushing young, young men, young gentlemen to contact our Public Works office, go through the process, um, get insurance, um, the simple things so they can so they can do business with us, things that, um, you know, are are, you know, I I've cut grass for a long, long, long time, and, you know, I had insurance at first, but I never had a a a a need for, so, you know, that was just extra money, so I let it go. But to get big contract with the state and stuff, I never was able to do that, cause I I couldn't afford the insurance, and, you know, so that that's important, um, about getting people set up for it. So I I I wanna work with your office and 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 our um and our team to really try to get some, um, I guess you would say, training sessions available and and things of that nature. We've done, you know, the lead abatement, we've done some of that. Um, you know, there's some some things that we wanna talk to our state senators and and our federal people out to to remove a few things, so so people can go, and like child support, you know, right? You need to, you need to work to be able to pay child support, so if that knocks you out from getting the training, so things like that, so thank you.
And I know, it's a, it's a priority, this mayor, and I know she's she's talked to Ethan, the Director Posey about it, and getting him involved, and getting, you know, involved in that process, about getting minority business enterprises involved in that subcontracting process, so.
Thank you, so, and I appreciate you sending me the information that I asked for, um, as you got it, I appreciate that, and that's the only way.
I'll send it to to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Lesko, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, citizen's request to address the city council first, and I apologize ahead of time, I'm probably gonna butcher this name, is Julia Albarasin Green. Is Julia here? Going once, going twice. Next is, let's see if I say this one right, Alice Ramey?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. I would like to compliment Public Works. Would you come up here, please, Mr. Public Works man? You're in trouble.
It's because she says but, and then they're in trouble.
I have asked this man, I bet you, five times. We had a house that was really miserable on Poplar Avenue, and he got it cleaned up, and I mean, he got it cleaned up where it looks like almost very good. It is very good, thank you. The only thing we haven't got done is the dogs, and he is breeding.
County.
Dogs, okay? But it's like this, he does do good work, and he is top-notch in what he does, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for his work and his diligence to get it done. Thank you, guys, and have a beautiful evening.
Thank you.
I'm going home and watch wrestling.
I appreciate it, thank you, Director.
Chair, uh, sorry, before we go to the next, um, first speaker is here, she just stepped out into the hallway.
Ah, okay. Julia, would you mind coming to the podium and identifying yourself? You have handouts, hand them to the clerk, she'll come.
Okay, Ralph. Here, you can outstart it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself, and you have five minutes, thank you.
My name is, um, I have two versions, in Spanish it's Julia Albarasin, but since no one can pronounce that, in this country, I go by Julia Albarasin. I am the Executive Director of Western Illinois Dreamers. Uh, we were mentioned multiple times recently, once was when Ms. Hughes came here to complain that Western Illinois Dreamers, the organization that I represent, I'm the Executive Director, uh, was giving services to illegals, as this person put it. Um, so I came here so that you can see my face, and I I'll tell you a little bit about what we do. The Welcoming Center is a program that is run by the state, but different NGOs apply, it's a competitive process. Uh, we got funding three years ago, we first opened offices in Peoria, in Malmouth and Beirston, and then the next year, when they increased the funding, instead of overstaffing those offices, we decided that it was about time that Springfield had one, and also Peoria, so now we have four offices. What a Welcoming Center do is precisely that, welcoming people that come to town, so let's say a family arrives in Springfield, and they need to register their kids for school, we help them do that. Let's say that's an important aspect, um, somebody needs an immigration attorney, I don't know if you know, but I paid ten grand for my green card, uh, eleven years ago, so it's a very expensive service. We're able to provide a referral or our own in-house services for free. So that helps a lot with people that don't have, maybe have a way of getting a green card, but don't have the resources to do it. So we provide all kinds of help to immigrants, refugees, and also American citizens, because there's something that the Illinois Department of Human Services called, um, language, uh, what is it called, limited English proficiency populations, that's kind of a passe, um, term, now we use more English learners, but let's say a Puerto Rican who is an American citizen, right, by birth, comes to town and needs help, we can help them as well. Um, so that's what we do, I have some cards here that I can pass to the person back there, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Next person that's signed up pursuant to city council rules, Bradley Russell.
Good afternoon.
Evening as it is, uh.
Identify yourself and where's your address.
Bradley Russell.
And your address.
Uh, six ten South Fourth.
Thank you.
Uh, recently, well, let me start out, I I've lived in Springfield for thirty-plus years, had jobs, paid my own way, paid my rent, uh, moved in to the fourth street on uh two thousand eighteen, uh, they had some sort of income thing, I I at the time, I was working fourteen dollars an hour, and uh they allowed me to move in. Uh, and I only say this for context, in the beginning of twenty-one, I was diagnosed with cancer, and ended up having to go on disability, and uh had a nice little fight for my life, but I'm here. Um, but now, the Hickox Apartments been bought by a corporation out of New York or somewhere that they aren't really making any changes, but they wanna raise the rent up two hundred and seventy dollars, which I don't have any problem paying that much, but not for that kinda thing. So I have looked on websites, Zillow, and Apartment Finder, and all the rest of those, they all went three times the income. I I I'm on disability, you know, but when I got that place, I was making fourteen, but then I was on disability, and I was still paying the rent. I I've never missed a month of rent, but all the places went three times the income, or three times the rent. Uh, you know, at eight hundred dollars, they went twenty-four hundred dollars a month. On disability, I make, actor of the insurance, thirteen hundred, but, I mean, I've struggled my whole life, so I can stretch a dollar a hundred and one ways. For someone to say that you gotta make X amount of dollars to pay rent, I mean, give me the chance to pay, and if I don't pay, then say, you know, whatever, but it just doesn't make sense that, you know, all these places won't even give me a chance, like from the get-go, they, I I call them, uh, Dennison Apartments, I said, I'm on disability, she said, all right, have a good day, and hung up. That was it. I looked at a different place, uh, thirty-two oh one Terminal Avenue. It said in there, disability does not count towards your income. And I did look up on the site, and it said, it is against the law in all aspects, real estate transactions, including rent and lease, based on your source of income, including section eight and disability. So I don't understand, like, how these places can say that my income doesn't count, and not even giving me a chance. I mean, I I have no idea what I'm gonna do at the end of the month. Uh, I I've found one spot just before I came in, that hopefully I can get ahold of them, but everything is corporation now. Uh, Grand Valley Village, I went there, and nothing against anyone that's in their ward, but Grand Valley Village is not the, what it says over the uh road there, a great place to live. You go through there, and I mean, I'm saying, some of those mobile homes, trailers, whatever you wanna call them, they're in disarray, say the least. Another corporation went down, two nice young gentlemen, sorry, buddy, you gotta make twenty-four hundred dollars living here. Like, that that just doesn't make sense, so I just, I don't understand, you know, what I need to do to find someplace to live.
Yeah, Mr. Russell, I I appreciate you coming, it sounds like you have some absolutely legitimate issues. Um, I would like to put you in touch with Ethan Posey from our Community Relations Office, he unfortunately is not in this room, however.
That's fine, I have his card.
Well, you do have his card, okay.
Yes, sir.
Suggest Mike Disco, white shirt, if you turn around.
Turn around, look.
Raise your hand, Mike, he's here, he's the mayor's chief of staff, he may be able to help uh bridge that gap there, but uh uh when I've had issues in my ward, I know several of my colleagues, uh, related to, not identical to this, but related to housing and fair and fair treatment and so forth, that's the place you wanna go, and they do a phenomenal job, and they'll give it their all, I guarantee it.
Yeah, that's that's right.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys, for listening.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a lovely evening and happy Mother's Day.